Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year.
Happy.
All right, it is six o'clock. So the work session for Mayor and Council for January sixth is called to order. Ms. Hood, can we have our roll call, please?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Butler, Council members and City Manager. This is the roll call for January the sixth, twenty twenty five's work session. Mayor Butler.
You present.
Councilmember James.
Present.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Present.
Councilmember Akins Wells. Let the record show that Councilmember Akins Wells is not present. Councilmember Mears.
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
All right, thank you very much. Let's see. The consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda?
So move.
That was Councilwoman James. Is there a second?
A second.
That was Councilwoman Mears. Is there any discussion? All right, thank you, Ms. Hood.
Councilmember Jane.
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Mears.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Now, the adoption of tonight's agenda, I do know that there is one addition, and that would be I'm adding on the discussion of the selection for the twenty twenty five Mayor Pro Tempore. So is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda with that addition?
So move.
That was Councilwoman James. There a second?
Second.
All right, that was Councilman Mears. Ms. Hood, please.
Councilmember Jane.
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Mear.
Yes.
All right, I know we adopted the consent agenda, but I forgot to add to approve it as well. So let's go on with such. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, I mean, so move.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there a second?
So move. Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Mears, is there any discussion? All right, Ms. Hood, please.
Councilmember Mear, um, excuse me, Councilmember Jane.
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Akins Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Mear.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, that was for the consent agenda.
Oh, sorry.
No worries. Um, new business council discussion of a resolution to become a member of the Georgia Interlocal Risk Management Agency and participate in one or more of it's called G I R M A, the Georgia Interlocal Risk Management Agency. Background and history. The Ashley Wilson Act, otherwise known as H B four five one mandates that all public entities in Georgia provide a supplemental benefit program for first responders diagnosed with post-traumatic stress disorder as a result of exposure to traumatic events encountered in the line of duty. This legislation enables a one-time financial safety net designed to help first responders cover uninsured costs associated with P T S D treatment and recovery. The program ensures that first responders can access benefits quickly and confidentially, mitigating concerns about stigma or potential job loss. Importantly, this act does not affect employer health plans, which are already required to cover P T S D and other mental health conditions. This new program referred to as the P T S D program becomes effective on January first, twenty twenty five. Local government participation is required under this legislation, excuse me, which includes completing an application and signing a participation agreement to implement the program. Approval of this agenda item will authorize the city to comply with the requirements of H B four five one and provide its critical benefit to its first responders.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this is a great program for our first response, uh, first responders. It is, um, designed for, um, first responders not to have to worry about additional costs as a result of being diagnosed with P T S D. Um, MetLife has designed a program that is compliant with the new bill, and it has two components. It has a diagnostic benefit and also a lifetime, long-term P T S D disability benefit. And we're asking for your consideration.
All right, thank you very much, Councilwoman James.
No questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gutierrez.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Wells.
Thank you.
Councilman Mears.
Oh, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much. Item four, council discussion of case, conditional use permit two zero one four dash zero four, which is the conditional use permit to open and operate a place of worship within the institutional commercial district. Background and history. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to open and operate a place of worship at five to eight Forest Parkway Suite G. This property is found within the commercial strip plaza that has nine additional businesses, suites on site. The square footage of the suite is approximately one thousand two hundred and seventy square feet, and the applicant proposes to utilize this space to host worship services, gatherings, and church events. The hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, ten a.m. to five p.m. for administration, planning, and ministry functions. Friday and Saturday from seven p.m. to ten p.m., and Sunday services will be held at ten thirty a.m. The proposed capacity would be about twenty to thirty members in attendance for Sunday service, and on Friday and Saturday, the applicant advised that there would be approximately fifty to sixty or more members in attendance. Staff have reviewed the criteria for a conditional use permit, and the applicant does not meet the necessary criteria for approval and will have a significant impact on traffic and neighboring businesses based on the size of parking availability, the size of the lot, and the influx of members in attendance. During the evening events on Friday and Saturday, if there are fifty or fifty to sixty-plus vehicle at one time, there would also be an increase in traffic flow on Forest Parkway and entering and exiting the parking lot. On Thursday, December ninth of twenty twenty four, the City of Forest Park Planning Commission voted to deny the conditional use permit request. If the mayor and council deny the proposed conditional use permit request, the applicant will not be able to move forward with their request to open and operate a place of worship within the institutional commercial district or I C.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council members, and City Manager Clark. Um, as stated, this applicant brought a petition before the planning commission. It was recommended for denial because of the concerns of having sixty patrons in a twelve hundred-plus-square-foot space. Uh, additionally, there was concerns about, uh, parking as it relates to this particular site. There are nine additional tenants at this location. The site would only allow six to seven parking spaces per unit. Therefore, once again, there was a concern for parking and a concern about the number of patrons that would be occupying the structure. Therefore, the planning commission recommended denial for this item.
Thank you. And then I do want to just make record, this item is also on the regular session and will be held down for a public hearing. Councilwoman James, questions or comments?
No additional questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gutierrez.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilwoman Wells.
Well, just one, because I was under the assumption that we had a moratorium on it's not something one of the items that we had moratorium on.
I do not believe that we have a moratorium in place for storefront churches at this time.
Okay.
I think it's on beauty salon and barbershop.
Entire shops, but that's something we could consider.
It is something that you could direct the city attorney to move forward with a, uh, moratorium for a period of days as we revise what those criteria is for places of assembly.
Not that, um, against churches. Let me put that out there, but I just know, um, we, we have a lot of them, you know, and we need food places. We need shopping. We need certain things like that. So thank you so much.
It is a pleasure of the body. We could revise those ordinances. It seems like what we're getting from a historical standpoint is, is places of assembly trying to occupy storefronts, and we could further restrict those uses by making them standalone facilities.
That would be good.
Okay.
We would just need direction to authorize what the moratorium would be while we rework those codes as well as the time period in which, um, legal feels it would take us to get through all of that. Standard is six months, I imagine.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilman Mears.
No, ma'am. No question.
All right, thank you.
So is that direction, Mayor Butler, from Councilwoman Wells, for us to work with legal to impose this moratorium? And then legal, is there any way we can do that tonight to stop when we have to bring back the ordinance?
Bring back the moratorium ordinance for that.
So, Madam Mayor, I do have a question. Um, would that mean, um, I guess the moratorium, would it be just for the storefronts and not necessarily a church that want, that's trying to occupy another church building?
And the way we try to classify them based upon our Looper and other zoning standards, we look at them as places of assembly. And so what essentially we would do is for those places of assemblies, we would in fact have a moratorium that restricts us from accepting any applications until such time this body has finalized those revisions to your liking.
So, so let me, so places of assembly, would it be like if there is a standalone church that's not occupied right now, would they have be a moratorium for that building? If it's a church already and they want a church comes and wants to, to occupy, is that something that would be restricted? That's what I'm asking.
Um, based on what I'm hearing of those proposed revisions, that's not a use that would be, um, prohibited by, by the moratorium. Um, typically, if there are any applications that if the planning department's unclear of if they're going to be blocked by this moratorium or not, they would reach out to me and I would take a look at it.
Thank you.
Item five, council discussion of text amendment number twenty twenty four dash zero six and text amendment twenty twenty four dash zero seven. Text amendments for Article B zoning districts and design guidelines established section eight dash eight dash fifty Gillum District and section eight dash eight dash forty-two Urban Village District of the City of Forest Park Code of Ordinances. Once again, good evening.
Okay, I'm not done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I gotta do the background and history.
I'm sorry. Um, background and history, the Planning and Community Development Department has discovered some areas of the Code of Ordinances that need to be amended and allow tiny homes and cottage dwellings as additional housing types within the city. The proposed text amendments will be added to section eight dash eight dash five zero Gillum District and section eight dash eight dash four two Urban Village District of the City of Forest Park Code of Ordinances. On Thursday, December nineteenth of twenty twenty four, the City of Forest Park Planning Commission voted to approve the amendment to the ordinance. If the mayor and council approves the proposed text amendments, the City of Forest Park will be able to move forward with allowing developments of tiny homes and cottage dwellings within the City of Forest Park's Gillum District and Urban Village District. Yes, ma'am.
Once again, good evening. Um, as stated, basically what we have done is we had added some additional definitions and additional, uh, residential use within the Fort Gallum and Urban Villan Village District. We added definitions, excuse me, for tiny homes as well as cottages. Additionally, we put in some development standards as a basis to use in terms of evaluating, uh, applicants that come in that would like to develop this type of development within the city. Uh, as stated, it was recommended for approval, and I'm here if you have any additional questions regarding this item.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman James.
No questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gutierrez.
Would this be just, um, standalone on themselves developments? Or this is like if somebody wants to build a small home in their backyard, they can do that?
This is for standalone development. So if someone comes in within one of these two districts, um, we reviewed each district, and we noticed that there is enough property or area for people to come in and possibly do a project with anywhere between five to ten units. Um, so that is what specifically this is for, for biggers like divisions or projects that include more than one tiny home unit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wells.
No, thank you.
And Councilman Mears.
Do you think we need to, to add some kind of, uh, square footage to the structure?
Yes.
Keep it from being, uh, smaller cottages or whatever. We need to have a livable space, uh, in there somewhere so that we can govern how much or how big or what is built on the, on the property.
Yes, sir. Within the definitions, we define a tiny home as a dwelling unit that is five hundred square feet or less, and then we define cottage dwellings as six hundred, six, six hundred square feet or less. So we do give defined terminologies for each of, each of them. Um, in addition, we have setbacks and, uh, spaces between units and things of that nature to address any concerns with regards to this type of development.
Thank you.
Um, I just had a quick question. Were we getting more requests of such? So is this a more of a proactive approach or reactive approach?
This is more of a proactive approach. Uh, what I noticed in neighboring, uh, counties and cities, there are places that are actually establishing tiny home communities. Um, and since, uh, Forest Park is looking to move forward with having additional and a variety of housing types, staff felt it was important to allow tiny homes and cottages to permit, be permitted within the city as well.
But this is not solely germane to the Gillum District.
Well, this would only be for the Gillum District as well as the Urban Village District, and the reason why we just selected these two districts were because of the availability of land. However, if there is somebody or we do have requests for tiny home communities within other zoning districts, we will look into it, and if we have to make an amendment at that time, we will do so. But at this point, we just started with two districts to see how much interest comes to those two particular locations and zoning districts, excuse me.
I think the other point of clarity, if the governing body feels that the erection of these tiny homes is appropriate for neighborhood communities, then we could revise it as such. But as with all things, as we work towards more of a diverse housing, housing options within this community, still don't want too many tiny homes, too many townhomes, too many apartments. We want to diversify what that looks like. I don't know the likelihood of a tiny home community over in the Gillum area based upon it being so industrial. But again, to staff's point, this is just a way for us to gauge the applications that we may receive based upon the availability of land.
Thank you. Item six, council discussion of text amendment twenty twenty four dash zero nine. Text amendment for Title Eight, Planning and Development, Chapter Seven subdivisions, Article G, Fees, Section Eight dash seven dash eight one, Fee Schedule of the City of Forest Park Code of Ordinances, to amend such section and update fee schedule text. Background and history. The Planning and Community Development Department has discovered some areas of the Code of Ordinances that need to be amended for clarity and formal processes. Planning and community development fees have not been updated since nineteen fifty-nine. For purposes of ensuring that fees cover the cost of service while remaining competitive with neighboring cities, the fees have been updated. Additionally, the text has been updated to reflect current practice in determining fees. This text update has also received approval on Thursday, December nineteenth of twenty twenty four by the City of Forest Park Planning Commission. If the mayor and council approve the proposed text amendment to update fee sched, the fee schedule, the City of Forest Park will continue to move forward and remain competitive with neighboring cities.
Once again, good evening. Um, as stated, we did do a fee study research, uh, within Clayton County. Within the documents attached to this particular item, you can, will see a chart that basically outlines the city's fees compared to Clayton County, Jonesboro, Riverdale, as well as Morrow. So based on the fees that they are currently cha, cha, charging, excuse me, staff recommends the fee schedule that is item number nine in your packet, I believe, where we spell out specifically what the fees should be based on particular uses. For, so for instance, we gave fees for commercial rezonings, residential rezonings, land development permits, and things of that nature. Additionally, the text within the ordinance was also amended to reflect the way that the charges are being established. There's just a statement in place that states that with the approval of mayor and council, the fees would be based on the gross square footage and the international code council's current building valuation data. So what we're asking for this evening is for So what we're asking for this evening is for you to amend the text and to approve the recommended charges for the Planning and Community Development Department.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman James.
So with the changing of the fees, do you think it would impact us negatively with the people that want to come and do business in the City of Forest Park?
No ma'am, based on the fees that are being charged in neighboring cities, we're undercharging by approximately $200 to $400 less than our neighboring cities. The fees that were established are still the lesser of all those cities and municipalities in your comparative table. So we're increasing, but we're increasing at a level that still makes us the less expensive of all the places to develop in around Clayton County area.
I guess to be honest, in that question, Councilwoman James, the answer is it could. Because some of this impact is on the commercial developer as well as some of these would be on the residential customer, your constituents. So, but I guess it's just a way, it is a way for us to align our fee schedules with what our neighboring jurisdictions are charging.
But it's still less than what the neighboring jurisdiction?
For some, it is. And I think the comparative analysis that staff did was with the cities of Morrow, Riverdale, Clayton County, and Jonesboro, it looks like the four cities that are listed here. And for the rezoning, for instance, which would be something you typically see on the developer's side, the cost increases from $250 to $600, but our neighboring jurisdictions are charging between $800 and $650 for that particular fee. For the, I guess the other large one, the variance or conditional use request is going from $250 to $400, I'm sorry, to $650, which is aligned with what those neighboring jurisdictions are charging. So it just varies on the fee. I don't think we are charging more than any other municipality, I don't believe, based upon the analysis that was done by staff. But we're just right there aligned with what those currently assessed fees are.
And one other question I have, so with the increase of fees, besides the fact that we get more money, what impact would it have?
Well, once again, as City Manager Clark has mentioned, it is a possibility that it can impact development.
No, I'm sorry, let me rephrase the question. How will we use that money?
Oh, well, the money would actually go back, I'm assuming, into the general fund. But once again, this is a, that's a finance question as to where the dollar amount goes. I do know there'll be an increase in the amount of revenue taken in by the department.
So one of the things when you're assessing fees, you back it into the actual service provided. And so if you look at the last time these fees were updated, it was in 1959. The cost of service back then was a lot lower than it is now. So that's why your government assess fees. It's not to make money. It's to reimburse yourself for the services provided.
But that's in the general fund, not necessarily in that particular department?
Correct. It would all, it would all be a part of general fund.
Okay, thank you.
And this would differ from the impact fee that council approved that we're doing the methodology study. That's solely borne on the developer or investor that's doing a project, not the resident.
Councilwoman Gutierrez.
Yeah, I just, I thought these fees were updated by Director Shelby when he was up. I thought he changed some fees, so these weren't the fees?
Unfortunately, I'm not sure to what degree the fees were changed at that time. What I did was just take the fees that the city currently has and then did the updates based on that. So it might be possible that there might have been some fee increases, but I didn't see any.
Where are we getting the, since 1950?
That's the date that's inside the actual ordinance. The amendment itself states that the last ordinance revision date was 1959.
And that's when the amounts change?
I would say that's when the amounts were originally established. Now, if they were changed in between that timeframe, unfortunately, I don't have that information because it was not posted to the ordinance so that I would know what the date was that the other amendment was made.
Got you, thank you.
Councilwoman Wells.
Thank you.
Councilman Mears.
Yes ma'am. Well, I believe we need, we need to, 1959 was pretty far back. I think we need, we've upgraded our services and everything since then, I'm sure. And we, we need to be compensated for where we're at.
I just point, I'm sorry, I don't think the fees haven't been updated since 1959. I think the ordinance itself, but I think the fees have been updated.
I will say there are some fees listed in that ordinance. So the fees for preliminary plaits, final plaits, those haven't been updated since 1959.
Are those very common? Is that like a?
Yes, so anytime there's new development coming in.
You have to do that?
Yes, like if there's a subdivision, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Item seven. Is that where we're at now? Council discussion of case text amendment 2024-10. Text amendment for Title Eight Planning and Development, Chapter Seven subdivisions. Article B Procedure, Article C Plats and Data of the City of Forest Park Code of Ordinances to amend such section and update plat instructions. Background and history, the Planning and Community Development Department has discovered some areas of the Code of Ordinances that need to be amended for clarity and formal processes. Planning and community development plat procedures have not been updated since 1959. For purposes and clarity and transparency, the plat procedures must be updated to reflect the current review and approval process. This text update also received approval from the City of Forest Park Planning and Planning Commission on Thursday, December nineteenth of 2024. If the mayor and council approve the proposed text amendment to update plat procedures and data, the City of Forest Park Planning and Community Development Department will be able to move forward with procedures and data that currently reflect our current review and approval process.
And once again, good evening. As stated, I believe when I first came here, one of the things that the attorney had asked me to do was to relook at the plat review and plat information. So in this text amendment, that's what I've done. And basically what has occurred is there's some old language in here with regards to how the plat process is conducted. There's some references to the clerk's office and some other references to areas which we currently do not use. So basically, this text amendment just updates the ordinance to reflect currently what we do now with regards to plat reviews, preliminary, as well as final approvals.
You, Councilwoman James. Councilwoman Gutierrez.
Thank you ma'am.
Councilwoman Wells.
No, thank you.
Councilman Mears.
I do have a question and it may also be for our attorney and I guess really for all our directors also. But are we doing a comprehensive review of everything pertaining to specifically your department? Because you're standing before us, but I guess I will go for all the departments also. So we're not just piecemealing here and there as something comes up?
That is correct. Part of the text amendments that the Planning and Community Development put forward were based on the initial review of the zoning ordinance at the time that I originally came here. The request was to list the number of zoning text amendments that would be necessary in order for the department to operate at its more efficient manner. So we came forward with about 10 text amendments with regards to needing changes. And this is one of the text amendments that was also added to the list at the request, at the request of the attorney's office.
The other part of that, as to Mayor Butler, we are working through it with some of our other departments. You'll start to see the SOPs by the police department, which are a lot more voluminous. It's going to take a lot longer. Our legal team is working in conjunction with our HR department as we begin the overhaul of our personnel policies. You know, so it's something that we're just finally able to tackle. And as you can see, some of these ordinances haven't been redlined for a number of years. And then even as we move forward, some of it is going to be based upon things that just come up, things that we notice that are out of line with our current practice. You'll recall, we had the, a matter before this body on Scott Road. The first part of it had been approved by the Planning Commission and the council didn't know. So we're just clarifying some of those processes.
Alright, thank you. Item eight, council discussion of case text amendment 2024-11. Text amendment for Title Eight Planning and Development, Chapter Eight Zoning. Article E Tree Protection of the City of Forest Park Code of Ordinances to amend such section adding section eight dash eight dash one four two Tree Bank Ordinance. Background and history, the Planning and Community Development Department has discovered some areas of the Code of Ordinances that need to be amended for clarity and formal processes. This update promotes environmental sustainability, enhances urban greenery, and mitigates the loss of trees due to development. A tree bank allows developers to offset tree removal by contributing to a fund dedicated to tree planting and maintenance in other areas, ensuring that the community continues to benefit from tree cover. This approach helps improve air quality, manage stormwater, and preserve biodiversity while also fostering compliance with environmental regulations. On Thursday, December nineteenth of 2024, the City of Forest Park Planning Commission voted to approve the amendment to the ordinance. If the mayor and council approve the proposed text amendment, the City of Forest Park will be able to move forward with establishing a tree bank ordinance. Yes ma'am, good evening.
Good evening, once again. Yes, we have a tree protection ordinance. And at the request of council, we were also asked to establish a tree bank. And the purpose of this tree bank is, as stated, if we have developers in that have to remove a substantial amount of trees, the intent is that they'd be able to either donate funds or donate trees to the tree bank in which the city can utilize the funds or the trees and replant them at other public locations.
Thank you, Councilwoman James.
No questions.
Councilwoman Gutierrez.
Thank you for this.
Councilwoman Wells. And Councilman Mears.
Well, I do have a question. So as it pertains to the maintenance of the trees, are we going to have like an arborist that's on call for such?
Our intent was, as part of our soil and erosion RFP request, we also included landscaping as well. So that basically we would have a landscaper who would be familiar enough with trees and such so they'd be able to also oversee this particular part of the tree ordinance as well. So we could get an arborist part-time, but we're also planning on getting a landscape architect so we can balance between the two and see which one would be most appropriate based on what we're planning on moving forward with.
And the maintenance of the trees, that's just for the trees on public property?
Just on, yes, on public property, yes ma'am.
Well, Mayor Butler, I think the intent of this ordinance, and this was something Councilwoman Gutierrez brought up for clarity, is that if a developer is coming in and they need to clear X amount of space, they're charged based upon this ordinance for those trees. I know that, Mayor Butler, you've had concerns about just ongoing maintenance issues on private property for residential trees. And I don't think this ordinance speaks to that at all.
No, not to standard, single residences, correct. This is only applicable to developments, large-scale developments, as City Manager Clark has pointed out. And yes, that is correct. They could be charged a fee based on a calculation that's been established to donate funds to the tree bank, if not actual trees.
And subsequently, once they pay into this tree fund, based upon this ordinance, the Public Works Department or the governing body could find a location that they feel we need to plant trees in and we use said funds to plant those trees.
Alright, excellent. Thank you very much. So I know we do have some executive session items and I know Attorney MetroCardi had a couple of items that you thought would be very quick. Alright, so I'm going to ask for a motion to recess the work session and enter into executive session for personnel litigation, real estate, or legal matters.
So moved.
That was Councilwoman James, is there a second? That was Councilman Mears. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. And we shall.
All right, thank you, and we shall.